You ready? Okay. We have to wait for a few more seconds. Okay, it is six thirty. I'm calling the meeting to order for the Lisbon Board of Education. This is a regular meeting. It is Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty. We're in Lisbon Central School in the media center. All members are present except for Amy and Katie. And Addison, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Lauren is going to read our statement for public comment.
Per discussion at the March second, two thousand and twenty-three Special Board of Ed meeting, public comment will be limited to the items on this meeting's agenda. Speakers must state the items about which they will speak. The Lisbon Board of Education welcomes comments and suggestions from citizens of the Lisbon community. Citizens who wish to speak with the Board of Education about a particular subject or concern shall be recognized during the public comment portion of the meeting. Each citizen wishing to speak at that time shall be restricted to three minutes. As provided in Robert's Rules of Orders, speakers shall be courteous, avoid personal attacks, and refrain from the use of vulgarity. Public comment is an opportunity for citizens to bring concerns to the attention of the Board, but not an appropriate time to engage the Board in conversation. The Board may choose to direct the superintendent to follow up on a matter as warranted.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, would you like to introduce us to the Junior National Honor Society?
I sure would. All right, we had our National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony tonight, and we welcomed new members, and our national members offered to welcome us in the ceremony. So first, I'll begin. Do you need my mic on the mic? Okay. I'll begin by introducing the new members who are here. Some of them left out for ice cream. So anyway, we have Olivia Byel Lois. Come on down, Olivia. Arnold Montoya, come on down. Frank Snellser, come on in. Indeville Sylvester. Mew Peckell. And Peyton Smith. All right. Yes, we have to case the board, and now the old members now join us. Emma Boots. Helen Joy. Addison Plum. Christopher Dejeu. Dana Leduca. Allison LaFawn. And Ryan Higginson. And so you go, that's all. You see, I know how that happens. So they are really fantastic. It's been a fantastic group to work with. And as I depart, I am wearing great hands. And I did just over.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
You asked me not to do this? I told you I probably will. But can you tell everyone, how many years have you been doing this?
This is my thirtieth year, my thirtieth induction.
Can you believe this? And he has always done, at least since I've been here. Your speeches have been unbelievable. I can remember some of the presentations. Tonight was very inspiring. You're a very, very good person, and you're an excellent employee. And it has been my honor to have been with you. And I can't thank you enough on behalf of everyone, what you've given to this school.
Thank you. Let's go on, Brian. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Yes.
That's true.
Yeah. Okay, back to the agenda. Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, next on the agenda is correspondence. I have none. Okay, there is none. The ambassadors.
In Language Arts, we finished our S-Back and aims-up testing. Later this month, we are going to read a book called Prisoner B. It's about the Holocaust and the tragedies that occurred with it. In Spanish, we are designing the interior of houses with vocab words we are learning. For example, la cocina means kitchen. In science, we are learning about the planets. For example, we are learning about how much we would weigh on different planets and how old we would be. In social science, we are learning about the Oregon Trail and the mountain men. The mountain men refer trappers in the northeast. In math, we also finished our S-Back and aims-up testing. We are also reviewing how to solve systems of equations.
Thank you. And do we have the other student?
Please pull, please pull tonight, sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, he was just here, so I didn't know.
That was him.
Oh, okay. I got it mixed up. Sorry. Okay, next we're on to approval of the minutes for April seventeenth. Do I have a motion to accept? Joe makes the motion. Second by. Lauren, are there any corrections or additions? Any corrections or additions? There being none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, unanimous. The administrators report. We're going to start with Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening, everybody. So for the school, we are wrapping up S-Back testing. We're soon to be getting our NGSS testing for grades five and eight. I'd like to shout out to Felix Madrigal. Congratulations to Felix Madrigal, who is advancing to the Invention Convention State Finals on June tenth at the University of Connecticut with his invention, the Ultra Bright Book Light Version Two. We wish Felix the best of luck as he competes in the next round, and many thanks to Ms. Jenkins for coordinating all the details. Also, congratulations are in order to our April Students of the Month. We have Maya Morrison, Bradley Bissette, Marcus Malero, Addison Lavivera, Cooper Chidik, Andy Hong, Krishnan Kurya, Riley Rogolski, and Allison Zinowitz. Nice job to these students for demonstrating Cooper's Pride tenants, which are respectful, responsible, safe, and trustworthy. Last week was Staff Appreciation Week. We are thankful for all the staff here at LCS and appreciate all that they do for our school every day. Thank you to the LCS PTO for making our Staff Appreciation Week extra special. So thank you to PTO. Also, on behalf of the PTO, I do want to announce that next Sunday is our PTO Fun Run at the Meadow, and it's going to be a slime run. So we'll be using slime instead of the colored chump that we used last year. So that's bound to be a lot of fun. And that's all I have to report.
Only if you like slime. Okay, Scott.
Yes, good evening. I'm here to give the Special Education Report tonight. My name is Scott Trepanier, and I have the numbers for the month of May. The total number of students at LCS with IEPs is now at eighty-seven, and the total number in the district is one hundred and twenty-three. We had a student from RMMS, the Regional Multicultural Magnet School, move out of that school and back to Lisbon Central. So that was one change. We had a student who was found no longer eligible. We had another student who left having an IEP to a five oh four plan. And then we had two new students become eligible for a IEP. And we had another student return back to district. So those are the changes for the numbers for the month of May. Does anyone have any questions? All right, great. I have a couple other updates for you. First, I'd like to talk about me. I completed the Yukon NIAC School of Education pre-K to three leadership program. It was a year-long program. I remember sitting here last summer telling you I was starting that program for a week out at Aces in Hamden. I just completed it, and the program allowed me to really do a lot of work for our accreditation for the National Association for the Education of Young Children. We were in accreditation year. So a lot of my leadership training that I used there was helpful for me going through that process and leading the team here through the accreditation process. It happens every five years. I'm really proud to report that we passed the accreditation. We received our accreditation letter and our updated certificate, and included in the packet is the letter about our new accreditation from NIAC. And our accreditation is now valid until August first of twenty twenty-eight. This is important accreditation for us because it's tied to Lisbon's School Readiness Program in order for us to have grant funding. And it really is like writing a thesis for your doctoral program. There's just a lot to getting past the NIAC accreditation. We had to create a lot of documents online in a Google Drive. We put a lot of things together in order for us to get assessed. The assessor came and looked through all the things that we had in that drive that we answered, and then they also did an observation in the classroom. Our overall pass rate was a ninety-five point two-six percent, which is very, very high. We had two hundred and seventy-four scored items. Out of those items, which everyone is like an essay question, two hundred and sixty-one were met, thirteen were unmet. You also notice that they list a hundred and one that were not rated, and that's because they're not rated because NIAC also evaluates programs that have infants and toddlers, which we do not. So those are items that just don't apply to our program. Two areas to really highlight that we passed with a hundred percent score were on relationships and families and community relationships. Scored very, very high. Curriculum and teaching scored very, very high. But overall, everything was high because we scored over ninety-five percent. So I'd also like to to point out that and thank all the people that helped with this because this was such a big project. The leadership program helped me a lot with this process. But also, Ms. Overhall and Ms. Kimmuth are two pre-K teachers. They met with me weekly to plan and work on this. And then the help from EastCon, which is our RESC, the organization that supports us from the state. So that's Teresa Serprenat and Sherry Lambert. And then also really, all the administration here, business office, school administration, building and grounds, like all of these I had to go through to get bits and pieces that had to be put into this gigantic report that I had to create. So I just really, I can't thank everyone enough for the support. It was a real team effort to get this through, but it's a big deal for the school. So thank you for that. Other than that, my report's completed. Thank you.
Scott, I was just wondering, first of all, congratulations about the NIAC accreditation. You did a superb job. Were you going to mention something about inclusion?
Yes, so I'd also like to mention that the Special Education Department has been working with the School Administration Department. We've been working on a plan for next year, kind of improving our systems and how we're supporting students that could be moving into special ed and students that are in special ed. And one of the things that we're looking at is improving how we're delivering inclusion in the school. So we're working on that program right now. I don't have really a lot more to say about tonight, but I want to kind of get that out there, let you know that next month at this board meeting, I'll be kind of going through a lot of what the changes and what we're trying to do to improve our system and how we can help and support students and staff throughout the building.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
End of report.
Okay, thank you. Rachel.
Good evening, everyone. In the packet, there was a letter from the State Department of Ed regarding drawdown, drawing down funds in the e-grant management system, which we all refer to as EGMS. So the majority of the grants that the district receives are maintained through this e-grant management system. And currently, when we go to use the funds, we request them in advance. We like, we'll check balances and project out what we need for the month, and we'll request them a month in advance and review it each month. But now, starting July first, the State Department of Ed is going to move that system from prepayment request to reimbursement fund request. So they're going to update the system, and we'll be able to draw down more frequently. So it will be a lot more looking at reports weekly, bi-weekly, but we'll be utilizing the funds. I think it'll be good because it will just have us looking at it more often.
And will there be any hesitation in getting the money?
No, I don't.
You'll be able to draw it when you need it, or does it need to?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They're pretty efficient, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anything else, Rachel? Okay, thank you very much. Brian.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know we had our last asbestos inspection for this year. Brooks Environmental was going to do the six-month inspection. While here, the inspector found nothing, and all looks good. And we should be good to go to the start of next year.
Very good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Sally.
Thank you. You have in your packet an email from the auditors saying that they are going to revise the report that they did on a state and federal level. However, I also received a recent email, and it said that our tested expenditures, what Rachel and I had to do was send them the paperwork, so to speak, around the incumbences that seemed to have been the issue. And we did that. And they did come back saying that our tested expenditures were allowable and appropriate. So that's the good news. Also, we now match. They are agreeing that we return to the town forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So that's good. They did say they were recommending some ways of doing business. I don't have a problem with that, but I did email them back just wondering why, if we did everything correctly, they were doing these recommendations. And then I thought to myself, well, you know what? Maybe there are ways of doing things better, and I don't know it yet. So I am going to get back to them tomorrow and say, if you have a better way of doing things, we do want to see it. I've changed my mind on this. But right now, we are in the clear.
I just want, could you please clarify the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars?
No, I cannot.
No, but it wasn't an error on our part.
No, no. As a matter of fact, there's an email I couldn't share with you from our attorney. I wanted to. I will give a roundabout way of describing what was in that email, so it's all legal, but that maybe the town has to look at that and, I don't know what's the wording, and try to find out why they thought they had this money. So I didn't respond back to that. I didn't really. I just said, should I share this with people? It was more than that. I'm giving you a very succinct line here because I have to be careful. And I said, should I give this to everybody? And they said, no, let the town take it from here. So I don't know. No, we did not give, we didn't do it. We didn't give two hundred and sixteen thousand back. We're not sure exactly why it really came about. We've had this auditor for more than one year. This has happened before with incumbences. We were never cited. I don't know what it was about. I just look at life that we all make errors. Sally Keane makes errors. Other people make errors. We just move on.
So can I, just to confirm, so it's out there, that the numbers we closed out for the year now match what the auditors had. The previous number that was provided by the auditors was an error, and that the state report is going to be adjusted.
Correct.
All our numbers.
Yep. And that's important. You know why? All reports integrate, and if they see a something wrong, I will get a call. Well, no, probably I will get the call superintendent saying, your reports don't match. What's up? Now they're going to match. And I have to give credit where it's due. Ms. Rachel, she came in and really did, I think, a superb job in trying to help me through this. I thank you. I know you worked long and hard.
Both Rachel and Sally did a huge amount of work to correct this, and it wasn't our error. We did not. Anything else?
Oh, well, I do.
Yeah, no, I just.
Oh, okay, sorry. Jumped it. Real quickly, the superintendent's award. As you know, this award goes to students who excel in leadership, community service, achievement relative to ability, and it's under the auspices of Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's, middle school teachers vote as to who they think should get this award, and it came down to the top students, Aria Rainer, Raines, sorry, Allison Zinowitz, and Christopher Dejeu. And we are honoring them on May thirty-first at four o'clock in the LCS cafeteria. Just very light refreshments afterwards. But again, Aria Rains, Allison Zinowitz, and Christopher Dejeu, and we're very proud of them. Norwich Free Academy. Judy asked me to add this, and I'll talk about it just briefly. Our contract is going to be up with Norwich Free Academy in a couple of years. And there is a caveat in the contract or a stipulation that says, if you want to change anything or renegotiate, you have to start two years in advance of that date when it ends. So guess where we're at? What I gave you is Basra, I guess is or may be pulling out. I thought there was still going to be a vote on that because the chair had been in touch with me about giving them a copy of our contract, and so did the superintendent. I think they thought we all had individual contracts. And the only one that's slightly different is Norwich. And you know why. I don't have to go into that. I still think a vote may be coming, but then I was told by one of my colleagues, who also sends to NFA, no, it's done. They're pulling out. And I went, oh, jeez. Okay, so now, I guess, NFA went to the State Department of Ed and said, we want you to make what they call a declaratory statement. And I really don't know what that is, except they look at the facts and they decide who's in the right here. Because Basra wants to break contract, from what I understand. And also, there's three students. I'm not sure who they are or what their program is. I don't know. But they say they have to pay for these students, and Basra's saying we don't have to. So here's the contract for the general, and then they have three students that they're also disagreeing about. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. I had to tell the board chair. That's by some procedure. They did say we could access the attorney, but I don't know if that's for a fee. And, you know, money's, you know how I am about money. So I said, no, I'm going to hold off, just in case we do have to pay that fee. I don't want to get into that. So it's on the table, not as an agenda item, but just to let you know that if you want to negotiate, I'm not saying that. Please don't think I'm coming to the table telling you to do this. I'm not. But if you do, we have to do it quickly because this, come July first, it's over. We roll over. Does that make sense? And that's what Judy asked me to say.
Right.
Did I cover it all?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you all know the percentage increase for NFA this year. And if that was to happen every year, it becomes unsustainable at a point. The chairman of the Board of Finance touched on doing some sort of lottery for kids to go to NFA. I don't think that's something that we even want to entertain, but I think we need to be diligent. And as we see what other towns are doing, maybe we need to have a special meeting sometime in June, as well as our regular meeting, so that we can be informed of what's going on with surrounding towns. Lauren?
Could we perhaps get some information on what the increases have been in, say, the past five years or so, just so we could see if, you know, seven percent is, you know, in the norm or, you know, a one-time occurrence?
Right. We can get that for you, and I do have to say during COVID, I don't think there was an increase.
There was one year there was zero. I remember that clearly.
And then, you know, they were reasonable. I think we were all shocked when we saw the seven and a quarter. So, just so that you're aware. Anybody have any other thoughts? David?
Basra, what would, and again, I guess, see the petition about the crease. Are they talking about not continuing for those that are already enrolled?
I don't know.
That's a weird scenario for almost every other withdrawal I've ever heard about. There's always been the, you know.
You say, let them go.
The cycle.
Yeah, right.
And again.
That's grandfathered in.
Yeah, I just see it kind of weird what the petition was particularly, but maybe it's, you know, certain fees for students. But where, what would, where's Basra, Basra's just Lyman there?
Yeah, they go to Wyman. Yeah, they do.
But after next year.
On a.
Well, that's correct.
If it's true and it's fine.
Yeah.
Yes. I guess on a semi-positive, Basra's numbers aren't huge. They're something small to us, isn't that the thing?
They send less than we do, if that's what you're asking.
And I'm hoping that the Norwich move of removing numerous other towns to which Norwich students can go would have a cumulative increase in the total number of students, which theoretically should keep the cost per pupil down. So I'm being optimistic with that, but Norwich has voted to remove Bacon Academy, Waterford, and a few from their options. So that may drive more Norwich students to NFA, although they're keeping drizzled, I believe, as there has another option for them.
Yeah.
Hopefully, those numbers work in our favor.
The other thing, too, is I looked at the numbers for the high schools that we send our kids to, and that was a few months ago. And we send about fifty percent of our students go to NFA.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that you're aware of that. Anything else?
That number's been pretty steady, right? That fifty has been pretty steady, I think.
You know, I didn't do it for a long time. I think I did it for about five years, you know? And it's all relative on what you consider steady, too.
Yeah.
I know one of the districts that sends a lot of students like we do. I think it's okay to say, because I'm not mentioning who it is. They will not pull out. They are going to try to renegotiate, but they're not going to pull out. I can tell you that much. There is one other district that's very small, doesn't send a lot, and they may pull out if Basra does pull out. But what I'm trying to tell you is that the larger numbers, it looks like they're staying. At least right now. I meant right now. But one thing I thought I should say, that if we, let's say you wanted to negotiate, just pretend you did. I think it opens up the entire contract. So anything can change in that contract, even though we're going in perhaps about the seven point two-five percent. Once you open a contract, everything's up for grabs. That can be risky. That's all I'm saying.
And this past week, Sally and I have talked, what, maybe five times? And going on each side, you know? Do we open it? Do we close it? What's to our advantage? What's to their advantage? And all of that kind of stuff, so it's going to be tough because you don't know if you're right. I mean, if we were to have seven and a quarter percent every year.
You think only two?
I don't think.
I don't know. I'm just saying, devil's advocate, you know? And then if it's their usual two to three percent, then, you know, we just don't know. They're getting new leadership, and so.
And how do you negotiate that? Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm talking too much.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, because if you say no more than three percent a year, well, maybe it wouldn't have been three percent a year. It could have been one. Or if you say ten percent over five years, well, that still doesn't, I don't think it would happen. But that doesn't mean that one year could be ten percent. It's a tough, I don't know. Maybe I'm not looking at it right. I see faces, so maybe I should be quiet.
Well, the other thing, too, is we're looking at seven years because we've got two years here, and then it goes into five, so that makes it even harder. You know, so I don't know. But we'll be talking about it a couple more times. Anything else for NFA? Okay. Next on the. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of monthly expenditures. I need a motion to approve the final expenditures for April twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of nine thousand six hundred dollars. I have, Lauren made the motion, a second by Jenny. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It was unanimous. I need a motion to approve monthly expenditures for April twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of six hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Motion made by Lauren, seconded by Jenny. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, for the financial statement, I need a motion to approve the final financial statement for April twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, as presented by the administration. Motion by Lauren, seconded by Jenny. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, motion to approve the financial statement for April twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as presented by the administration. Motion by Lauren, seconded by Jenny. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is, uh, the acceptance and approval of April.
Korikowski.
Okay, Korikowski, our dedicated special education secretary. You have the letter. She will be missed. Um, I need a motion to accept and approve her letter with regret and to wish her much success in the future. Lauren makes the motion. Uh, Ms. Ray seconds. Uh, questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. And now we have a discussion for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget projections and possible action.
And Rachel will take this? Or start it at least?
Yeah, okay.
Um, so in the packet, I have a sheet with my projected ending balance.
Give them.
Um, I went through the incumbences that we already have and reviewed projections with, um, staff members in the buildings, what we expect to pay for the end of the year. Um, and the projected balance is about seventy-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Yes, you did, you did a great job doing that. Yep. So then, what we talked about is that usually the board will ask us for a list of those necess, um, things that, yeah, we need, we need, um, that we might spend the money on. So we developed a list, which you have in front of you. And we're wondering how you felt about it in terms of letting us go ahead to spend the money.
So when I looked at the list, what is replace UV light?
This is a glow?
Yep.
That's for the water system. So knock on wood, keeping us clean. So.
Oh, okay.
The water goes through this UV light and as it comes through, it's sterilized and hopefully knock on wood, keeping us calm, no, no hits.
Okay, so it's, it's to replace, that has lived its lifespan?
Just needs a replacement valve system, yep.
Okay.
Water tank inspection, that just seems so expensive. I know, I know it is, it is what it is, but boy, an inspection, that just seems like someone's got a monopoly on that.
Yeah, it's the state of Connecticut.
Oh, okay.
Now we know where the monopoly is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about these items?
I have a question.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure how much information you'll be able to give me, but the
Okay.
security program deployment project and the incident response project.
That's brand new to us. You want me to explain what I know about it?
Well, yeah, is it, yeah, is it actual physical items or?
Well, it's an incident response plan. So if something goes awry, we have a huge disaster, how do we recover in our technology world? And, um, Nova will put it together, like, what's the process? If someone got into our financials after a disaster, what do we do? Where do we start? They're going to work with us, I believe, over the summer, putting this plan together. Now, there's a reason why we, let me go on. The data security, and then I'll tell you why we have to do it. The data security is, um, it puts us in a better place for protecting our accounts, such as staff emails, things that they write, things that they save on their computers. Why we need these is you can't get cyber insurance if you don't have these two items. Yeah, that's the big deal. Not that we don't, I mean, we don't need it. Don't get me wrong. There's a lot of things happening in the world today. And we need it as soon as possible. But a lot of it too, you can't get certain insurances. That's a big deal.
Thank you.
Did, did that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does this somehow tie into some schools and I think some hospitals, they get somehow hacked and get held hostage?
Yep, it can help with that.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, you got it.
I sort of understand that. Okay, anything else on the list? So do we want to approve the list? Dave?
I think I was late on the anything else list. Question, the gym floor gets a little of that, how, do we do that every few years? The, what do you call it, sure, the wax coat or something?
In Raleigh.
Every year? It just seemed like it was a lot of chip in this year for some reason. I don't know. All right, that's all. Sorry.
No, you don't need to be sorry.
No, that's a good, yeah.
And, and does anybody have anything else maybe to add to the list?
Another question, I'm sorry. For these items, is there a lot of lag time? Say, will we be going into April or May of next year with items that will be uncovered? Or these items? One that we know we can get pretty quick, also, just in case we want to hold out POs, in case we need funds to cover anything we don't see that comes through.
That would definitely be my preference. Do not want to go this far with income.
Right.
This year.
We just can't guarantee anything.
Right.
But we don't want to go that far. We've done this before with going into March and April, but not just this year, but years past. But we, we try to avoid it if we can.
And, and as a best guess, at these things that are on the list, do you see any of them as being maybe a supply chain issue?
Hmm.
Oh, so we're beyond that? That's good.
I don't think so. What's by it there?
For my items, I believe so, yes. Should be good.
Okay. Because I know that held up a lot of stuff the last few years.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, COVID didn't help.
COVID didn't help.
No.
I guess another question. I know we don't like to go right up to the dollar. We like to leave that little fucker zone, which makes sense. On the later agenda item about the Dushar money, some of it's noted as other funding. Are any of those small enough at the legate per side?
Oh.
Are any of those requests small enough that they could be considered in this bucket? Is that what you call it? Something less? Is there a word you use now?
It's all correct.
Something less.
Um, I'm not really, I think Joan and Judy have to answer that. I'm not really spearheading that. Who sees the question?
No, I do see the question. And what I'm thinking, I don't know what Joan's thinking, is, um, maybe if we had money left, it could be done after the June meeting.
Okay.
And then we would know.
Yeah, I mean, there might be some things on there.
Right.
That would be great to be able to do if there was some money to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Good idea. Anything else? Okay, uh, motion to approve the list of possible purchases with unexpended end of year money due to the need for such perfect purchases. A motion? Joan? Second, Lauren? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Possible transfers and possible action.
Yes, it's unusual that we have this on the agenda in this location, but we had to have this list approved before we could do the transfers. So Rachel, do you want to?
So with the list approved, some of these transfers include?
Which we got tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
You need someone to make the motion here.
I, I don't know if people are done.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay. A motion to approve transfers as presented by LCS administrators. Dave?
Why isn't asking if we needed it?
No. Yes, we need a motion. And, and I thought you wanted to make the motion.
No, I didn't do that.
Who would like to make the motion? Joe will make the motion and we have a second by Lauren. Okay, are there any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Ian had asked for the next agenda item, capital improvements. Um, he is not able to make the meeting again be due to work. Uh, so I would like to table this item. So we will put it on the agenda next time. Uh, now it's an update on science reading. Chris?
Sure. So at our last meeting, I mentioned to all of you that the state mandated us to, uh, explore curricula for grades K through three that have the science of reading. Uh, we do have a team and we are currently going through the, uh, model curriculum that the state had recommended. We've gone through four different, um, programs so far. We have a few more left, um, and we have been meeting, um, regularly to review this curriculum. We did, uh, get some information from the state about possible funding, uh, which we are hoping to apply for. We're just waiting for it to be, uh, basically released in order for us to apply for it. Uh, but that would give us some funds for the next school year and the year after in the amount of twelve thousand is what it said for each year. And that's my report for our science of reading update.
Any questions? Okay, next is the math curriculum.
So the end of this year marks the second year that the grade six, seven, and eight students have, and teacher have used the Great Minds materials. And it's also the first year that the grade five teachers and students have used the materials. All the teachers have reported that they like how the materials align with the standards. Um, they have been enjoying the, uh, interactions with the students using the curriculum, the materials. Uh, with that being said, this is the first year for our grade five teachers to implement, implement this, uh, program. So our SRBI math coordinator, Ms. Jenkins, has been spending some time with both grade five classrooms to support the implementation of the Great Mind materials. Next year, we actually move down to grades K through four with the Great Minds materials. So we're still working on that and people are liking it so far.
Good.
Very pleased.
Any questions?
This is semi-related. I know we recognized some of the S-Stack achievements, which I thought was wonderful, last, whatever it was, all maybe or something, winter, I love track. But my point is, I think it's nice to also maybe further encourage the eighth graders to put forth their best effort. When we recognize the achievements, maybe also recognize any of the current eighth, wouldn't be in the school next year, but at least they took it during that time of testing. You know what I mean?
I know.
So like this year we did, and we recognized up to this year's current eighth graders. But last year's eighth graders also took the test while Lisbon students, maybe freshmen, off somewhere now. But if we recognize it, whatever we did, like two per grade, something, a couple of kids per grade level, we did something to kids who.
Yeah, we recognized kids.
Yeah, yeah.
We did.
I'm just saying, maybe you could reckon, maybe they wouldn't show up. But you could recognize the eighth graders who took the test as eighth graders. So it could, a little more encouragement for them to see the reflects on the school, you know? Hopefully encouraging them to put their best effort forward, that you're at least acknowledging their, whatever they do. Just a thought.
And we're acknowledging them when they are freshmen.
Yeah, when we.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, when we recognize those achievements.
Good idea.
Read off the couple of last year's eighth graders who did well on the test.
And, and we can notify them by mail as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they, you know, they took it when everybody else took it.
Right, right.
Here, and their scores reflect on our scores. So I think maybe it's not a bad idea to throw them away.
It is. It is a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kind of, I think, not really.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, next is safety drill and policy. Um, that Katie had asked for that to be on the agenda. She's unable to be here tonight, so we will table that. Which now brings us to the survey results. And you had those in your packet. Joan did a great job of creating the spreadsheet. But she did it. So we, we met as an executive board for, I don't know, an hour and a half or so and went over this, I think. And we sort of tried to break them up into categories that you can see on the right. And, um, I'm thinking Joan probably has something to say. And that we would just go one by one and either basically it's going to stay or it's going to go. And then we will go from there? Or did somebody else have an idea of how to manage this?
I guess a, a quick, I know you're explaining, but as we go through that, if they're in the keep, those are the ones who, some of them have been, I don't want to say disqualified for reasons as noted, either cost prohibitive or hopefully other funding.
Uh-huh. So. So what I was thinking is even if we say it's cost prohibitive, the pool, that's the one that jumped out at me right now. Let's say.
And the first estimate of a hundred thousand dollars way, way lower just seeing that.
No, but I was just going to say that if, let's say, there's board members that want that, then you can move it into the keep pile. And then once we have the keep pile, then we can start dividing up the work and seeing what, who's going to do what. Because if my intent right along is whoever submitted the idea, the work for the pool would go back to that individual. And then they need to start doing things for whatever needs to be done to get more funding for the pool would be the first step.
And that's all I want to mention, because I think some of the items, I think it's a great clarification and classification, but I'm not sure that some of them are maybe like, like the real life dog, that's cost prohibitive, that's an expensive dog.
So one of the things, and because it's twenty twenty-three, one of the things that we have to talk about is insurance.
Yeah.
So.
I'm agreeing, that would be a tough one. I just didn't know whether costs.
So, you know, yes, I mean, not the dog itself, it comes.
Okay. So is this a good starting point or do you want to do this differently? Okay. Joan, did you have something you wanted to say?
I don't think so. I mean, we really just tried to sort them as a starting. And I think that could be a different. If there's anyone who has a different impression. And so, Dave, that you were looking at where we put other funding that potentially some of the.
Yeah, maybe some of those, you know, a little money left over and I, I just, like, other funding versus field trips. I'll just make sure, I, I look at the budget, I'll that carefully, but people have budget questions.
Yeah.
Was there still money in the budget for field trips next year?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'd like to start at the top of the list. Decide whether we're, it, it, we're keeping it or it's going. Okay? And then we can make the two piles and then move to the next step. So the first thing on the list is buddy benches. And we felt as though we already have those. There's one right in the entrance way. And I think there's a couple of others. So do you agree that it goes or does it stay? Do we raise our hands? How are we going to know? Nobody's talking.
The other thing you meant that was in here was the outdoor class. And I know someone mentioned somewhere on the trail that's there, there was space for an outdoor class already. So I think that was part of where it was already, we already had those items. Yeah.
So. The buddy bench goes. Okay. The next on the list is a pool.
Yeah.
That goes. Next is solo panels on the roof. Cost prohibitive.
I don't think that's, to me, that's, if we do it, it's through some other thing, not this, not just money.
Right, right. Okay. So solo panel goes. Pay for preschool and lunches. I think somebody did the math in the group and it's like more money than we have. So it goes.
Well, I'm not opposed to down the road preschool funding.
Oh, no, I'm not opposed to it at all, but we got to remember this is Duchamp money.
For this, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for this.
Right, right. Then the community pools, splash pads, seasonal skating rink. We really liked the idea. We felt as though this was more pox and wreck. And some of this, like the splash pad would be used when we're closed. So that goes. And a climbing wall for the gym, that was an insurance issue.
Really? I'm going to say other places, I know other places have it, so I was just surprised with a little bit of some of it. Maybe not anymore.
Do you? Do you want to keep it? How many want to keep? Jenny?
I feel like we could investigate it a little bit more.
Okay, so we'll keep it?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a keep. The handicap wheelchair accessible ramp from the upper playground, which is up here, down to the track. I know when this addition was done, there was talk about that and it was prohibitive and the length of distance. And so we felt again that it was cost prohibitive and we look at grants, look at other funding. You know, as a school, as a town. What do you want to do?
Agreed, but I think it should be marked. So somehow we have to have that noted that we want to look at that because that one I heard, I did hear that from a lot of people about the access, even like graduation, right? It's tricky coming down, the whole ramp thing and all that. So as long as this look into list grants is, something is happening with that.
Yes, Brian, do you want to take it?
So I actually met, excuse me, met with CLA engineers, the town engineering firm. They are going to investigate if we can even put a ramp out there. Just because of, you've got to have so many fee landing and arrest point. So soon as I find out, I'll pass it on.
Great, that's great.
Okay, so we'll just move that to the board agenda and take it out of this?
I would agree.
Okay, so it's out of this line. Solo panels to power the whole school. Again, it's out? Yes, no? It's out. Real life school dog. We thought that was cost prohibitive and what are we going to do with the dog? Right. And I just have to say, you know, at one time at the senior center, we were all into getting a cat. And, you know, we worked out all the details and everything. And then I realized the cat is only going to have people for 30 hours a week. And that wasn't really fair to the cat. So I sort of feel the same way about the dog. Okay, so the dog is out. The handicapped ramp, which has just been moved to. Then we have the bank shot sports system.
Now we're into the group that is currently to get more info.
Yep.
Great.
And you agreed to keep it? Yep, and so we will give this back to Alyssa and give her questions on what we need to know. Then we have building and maintaining a greenhouse environment. And this actually was submitted by four different people. So the executive board looked at contacting the four different people and giving them questions to get them started because I think we're all very interested in it. We just don't understand how it's going to work. And then in your packet, you have a list of 10 questions to start with. Did you have a chance to look at them? And do you think that's a good starting point?
Oh, for the greenhouse, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It sort of looks like this.
Yep.
Okay. So with your approval, we will send that to the four of them? Yes? Okay, I was just moving my stuff around. Sorry, I was distracted. Okay, so now we're down to the maker space. And again, unless, is anybody here really familiar with this? Otherwise, we will send it to get more information?
Yep.
Hi? Okay, oh, I do too. And then we have the eighth grade graduation awards equity. And Joe has talked about this. And so does it stay or does it go?
Big stay.
Yes, yes. Okay, so that stays. Joe has pretty much done all the work on that, so. And then we have purchase modern cameras. Stay or go? Stay? Okay. The electronic sign, I put in for that. I'm willing to do the work. Do you want it to stay or go?
It was the original idea and I think it's a good idea. I know it had a lot of resistance, I'm being honest, but I think it should stay and it should be, we looked into a little bit more.
Okay, any?
That's not just me, but I know, I know it had some resistance.
Right, and it is something that has been asked for two other times by PTO.
Did we ever get the zoning answer on that? Or what's happening like with the firehouse? Can I ask that question?
Well, I had talked to Mark. Have you talked to Mark? What? Can I hear you?
The firehouse sign is still up to be, we're working on it.
Right, right. So it's all the work in progress because planning and zoning says that you can't have anything backlit or electronic or. And you know, every time I go by Lisbon Meadows and I see their sign about their ski trips and stuff, it would be so much easier to read if it was electronic. But that's only my opinion.
I'm agreeing with you, but I just know that sometimes overcoming zoning obstacles can be difficult.
Very difficult. That's why I said I was willing to do the work. Because it's going to be time consuming. Okay, let's see. Then we're another greenhouse, so that stays. We have a theater drama program, one production a year.
Big fan of any kind of extracurricular thing like that.
Okay, so we're keeping that. Implementing a school bank, in-school bank. Joan?
I don't remember what that was.
Each kid would get $5 and they would get a savings account and then be able to bring money into the school. This is the way I understand it. You know, we need to get more from the person that submitted the idea. What? I did not hear her say yes. Maybe we could get somebody from the bank to come every week and click? I don't know. Again, that's something we need to know more about on how that's going to work. You want to in or out?
I don't, I don't know that it's feasible. And that's just me. I mean, I know some high schools, some schools do have a bank. I just don't know that it's feasible.
I'd love to get more information, particularly with the whole notion that financial literacy is part of the upcoming future. I think it would be a nice tie in.
Yep.
And it would be kind of avant garde for what kids wait to do with them. So I don't know, I'd like to get more info.
Right. So we all agree we'll get more info? Okay. And then we.
It was a well-written presentation.
Yes. And I have heard other schools in the area do have them. So next is student of the month breakfast. I thought that was a great idea. In or out?
Can.
Go ahead.
Can that be other, can that be something we should absolutely do? I just don't know how many different ways we want to be splitting this trust fund, this, I think it should be 100% today, but this can't cost that much. It can't be something that we can either get, go or get some kind of money or put in the budget, I don't know. Can't imagine it's that much money.
So that's one of the, that was one of our big questions.
Right.
Because we need to get cost estimates, see what we're looking at. Now, is it 500 bucks or is it 5 grand?
Yeah.
I think the other thing too is I would be more interested in programs that kind of hit the entire population versus, you know, only certain kids each month.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Agreed, I still think we should do it, but I think it should be, I don't think it should be from this, that's me.
Okay, so we're not going to keep the student of the month breakfast?
But I think we should do it and find the money elsewhere. That's my belief.
Okay, but we're talking about the Duchamp money right now. So it's out of the Duchamp money.
Right.
Do you want to add? What we could do is we could create a list of these and put it on our next agenda.
Yes.
Okay, you want to do that?
You happy with that?
Okay.
I just want breakfast.
I do.
Because you always want to eat.
I can rip, I had a double-headed rip breakfast one day this year.
Okay, next on the list is class VR for a classroom. So. Stay or go? Okay, so Jenny says it stays. Others agree? Okay, so it stays. Next is food composting.
I think your note is great. To me, it would be in conjunction with the greenhouse project.
Right, so do we add this person to the greenhouse project or keep her independent?
Either.
Okay, so now we have five in that group.
Yeah, brings ties.
Okay, did you write that down? Okay, then next was a bell choir for elementary students.
I think that one's worth getting more information on in that we'd have to figure out how much it costs and someone would be able to lead that.
Right, right. Okay, so we're keeping that. And then we have the pottery wheel and stools. Go ahead, Lauren.
I would like to keep that one.
Okay, everybody agree we'll keep it? Okay, so we're keeping that. The next is another greenhouse. Preschoolers could use a gate next to their door. I think Sally, you were going to ask about that. Did you get anything?
Well, Brian, Boone and Scott and I talked about it. We're not sure of the location. Wasn't that where we left it? We're kind of confused as to where they want the skinny.
Okay, so we need to go back to this person.
Yeah, you have to get more info.
And this also could be with other money?
Funding.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll just get more information. Yes? Okay. The sensory room with special water lights and many designs.
Now we're into what was noted as the other funding group?
Right, right. Do you want me to just quickly go through those and then you'll speak up if there's something that you think we should get more information on? Okay, so it's the sensory room. It's new playground equipment, sports equipment and rubber tire materials on the playground, so no wood chips. The next one is yearly fall Salem, Massachusetts field trip for seventh or eighth graders. Assemblies for targeted grade levels, field trips, multi-grade outings.
Can I ask a field trip question?
Yep.
What's the seventh, where do seventh graders go? I know sixth is a biggie and eighth is a biggie. What is seventh Project O, is that what it is?
Yeah, seventh goes on Project O. But is there another trip though? No.
I feel like they get a short end of the stick. That's just.
Is that where you're going? Yeah. Well, yeah, it's on Project O excursion, it's more than once.
I'm just saying, if Salem were to go anywhere, seventh graders.
And Dave, go back to your question. When you asked about field trips being the budget, we're doing it by grants. Mika and I wrote grants. So it's not really in the budget.
I saw it, I saw it, it was out of there. Long as, long as it's being funded.
Well, that career will be, yeah, come next year. Year after it's going to be gone. It's a great school. Unless you go to Reed State or New York City.
Okay.
And I think when we met Mr. Sheldon, you said that some of the problem is things have changed since COVID. So what might have been available isn't available. So that's why some of the change has happened? Like bringing programs into the school, I think you also said that. Creation of a sensory break slash, a sensory slash break room. Outdoor play equipment. Sensory room swings. Swings, overall playground equipment, more color printers, copiers would be awesome. Charging station and storage for tablets are needed and STEM projects of robotics. So those are all we think we can do with other funding. Yes?
Can we go back to the field trips? There was a grade seven field trip. It was to the guard for a play, but it was canceled.
The play was canceled. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so now we have the ones that we need to get more information.
I think there were a lot of notes on playground stuff.
Yep.
And I think that might be, seems to me most schools, when they try these, that becomes a little bit of a PTO. You know, it's all, it's usually there. And I always hate to see things on a list like this or things I feel should be funded by the board event, by the school, have to get funded by other ways. I'm really against that.
Right.
But playground is one thing that a lot of schools seem like it does come from external stuff. It's a lot of people mention it. Maybe it's something that it's worth starting that discussion along those lines of maybe some kind of project.
Or just swings?
Swings, swings are cool.
Yeah, you know, because people are asking for swings, maybe just add swings to the playground. To, as a starting point.
Brian Boone likes, we've met all the bodies.
Brian?
Just tell what one of the issues is, but maybe not in some.
It's pretty much location for the swings, just because.
Swing's need a lot of space.
Yes, and we are limited for what we have with, once we put that track in, we lost a lot of space down below. We had a big playground down there before. So, yeah, swings are a tough one.
So I'm just thinking with you saying that and space. Right now, between the school and what's going to be the new firehouse is where the White House was. Logistically, moving kids across that parking lot. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, not a good idea. Okay, so, well, I know.
Parking lot and add a new wing.
Oh, we're adding a new wing now? Where are you getting that money, Dave?
I don't know.
Okay, so we have a list to get more information. Is it reasonable to think we're going to have the information or some of the information for the next board meeting? Or do we need to give these people more time?
I think we should ask the questions and see what we have. We have answers or people for the board, you know, it's on the agenda.
Or why don't we have it on the agenda anyways? And then if we don't have anything, we'll just table it for the next time. Sound reasonable? Okay, so I think Joan, you and I are working on sending out these letters. Okay.
And thank you for all the work on that. That was a really nice list.
Does the executive board want to meet and come up with questions or divide the work?
So also, if you have any questions about any of the ones in the get more information file, please forward that on to Adam.
I've lost my agenda. Okay, okay. I was just saying, I've lost my agenda. I don't know where it is. Okay, anything else for the Duchamp account this month? Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is an executive session. So if I could have a motion to move 10 aye down below, public comment.[1782.91] Uh, I have Jenny and Joe. And all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. And then, uh, committee reports. So, the executive board now did any other committee? You know what we did. Okay, additions to this agenda. No additions? For the next agenda, we will have, uh, the Gerald Duchamp. What else?
Just two table items.
What? Oh, yes. Uh, the two things that we tabled from Ian and Katie.
Does one of those table items require us to have a policy to expire?
I don't know because is it clear what the ask is?
No. So, we need to kind of know what, what we'd be bringing in terms of change.
Thank you.
Anything else for the agenda?
Can we look into, um, for our special ed students that are in NFA, are they getting all the services that are, that in the contract they're supposed to be getting yet in the IEP?
How would you like me to respond to this? The question, please.
That other people can't hear you.
The question on table.
I have an air is if kids have IEPs at NFA, are they all getting the services?
And I was meant to add that to next month's agenda.
Why don't we add that? Because I think, I, I would like to meet with Scott as to how we respond to this. Scott, I, I would ask you not to respond, actually. Can, can we add that?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I intended to give you.
Well, she said NFA.
But is, I guess my question, is it just NFA?
Yes, yes.
Well, I mean, in general, in general, I mean, even have more, but I can, I don't, but I just kind of thought that that's from, you know, we have a chunk of kids. I didn't know that we had a lot going on the girls' school.
Okay, so we'll add.
We should look into it all across the board, I think.
We can.
At every school?
Yeah, that'll be easy.
Okay.
One won't be, but the rest I think will be okay.
I agree with that.
I agree with that too.
Yeah, I, I can put together a report for that.
Yeah, let, let's do that now.
Absolutely.
So, it'll be special ed at the high schools?[1711.96]